We are here to discuss two projects. One that will be funded by a bond at Four Lunn Lane for renovations and around the barn, as well as CIP or the continuation of our energy work that we have done on the schools, which will be funded in a different model, which we'll spend a little time talking about both of those funding models going forward. So I'll pass it off to you.
Yes, Mr. Chan, just going to start with reading the article.
Yes, please.
Article one will be to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,404,308 to construct, furnish, and equip renovations to the barn and house at Four Lunn Lane and Hollis, and to authorize the issuance of $1,404,308 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA, Chapter 33, and to authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bonds and notes and to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $26,477 from taxation for debt service payments payable on such bonds and notes during the 2020-2021 fiscal year. A two-thirds ballot vote is required on this article. To give some background to those at home, the house at Four Lunn Lane was built in approximately 1900. It's owned by the Hollis School District and rented to the SAU since 2003. The SAU currently utilizes 5,612 square feet in the farmhouse. Rental revenues retained in building maintenance trusts per annual warrant, so all our rental income goes into an annual trust for the maintenance funds. The current conditions, we have seen significantly increases in what we're mandated to do via technology and requirements by the state of New Hampshire. So we have critical crowding of 16 full-time employees in that farmhouse. To give you an idea, think of an old farmhouse, the bedrooms on the second floor as large as maybe 12 by 15 to as small as probably 8 by 10. In those bedrooms, in one of those, we have three people working; in another, we have two; and then we have our HR and business managers working separately and alone just because of the confidential material they use. To get to many of our offices, you have to pass through other offices. So if you're on the second floor, it's very difficult to have a confidential meeting because somebody may need to go through your office, so we're over utilizing the conference room for meetings that shouldn't be of that size. We are serviced by two one residential bathrooms. The second-floor one still has the existing tub, which we actually would like to remove and make that the hallway, so we wouldn't have to go through office to office. And the storage space is very limited. About two or three years ago, this discussion really started because of the fact that we had too much weight in the attic between all the required records. So our first goal with the bond is a proper foundation and storage facility for all the required records that we're to keep. The bond, when renovated, would provide six additional offices, a multi-use conference event space that could be used community-wide, as well as for SAU, Hollis School District, whoever may need the space. It gives us protected long-term document storage, and we retain the historic building. The farmhouse will gain improved access and security for the existing offices. We gained the long-term storage of the documents removed, and by removing and reconfiguring the bathrooms, we gain hallway access and significantly increased space. The project cost is $1.4 million, approximately. The bond is actually for the 1404-308. It'll be an individual article on its own. It would be the first article because it is a bond, so it appears first, and it requires a mandatory ballot vote. We would expect to complete this by the summer of 2022. We have done it in the form of a bond for 20 years. We'll go a little bit further into that in a moment. We anticipate increasing the rental revenues. Currently, they're at $23,970. Those rates are up over the last few years because we made a conscious decision as a board to increase those rates. As we add more square footage in a more of a commercial-type setting, I think the rates will increase between what I would say our present rate and the going commercial rate, which the lowest piece we saw, I believe, was around $10 a square foot.
Yeah, approximately.
And the value of the property, it was estimated in 2013 to be worth $830,000. We see that going up significantly. I will remind the board, as part of this project, one of our goals would be to separate, from a deed point of view, the field space and make that part of the schools that separated from the SAU offices, so that if in five, 10, 20 years that building was sold, the school district would have the playgrounds still.
Do you anticipate any complexities around that process, around changing the deed and shifting the field?
No, because in this case, the owner, the Hollis School District, wants to do it, and they own both parcels, so I don't think it'll be difficult. I think the question would be, how would you like it divided? Do you want it to become part of the parcel that is the primary school, or do you want it to become a separate parcel that the school district owns?
Hmm, interesting.
There's benefits to those pieces.
Yeah, okay.
We're at a point now with the barn, as the days go by, we do face an erosion factor because one thing that we learned, when animals were in the barn, there was a certain level of warmth, and that actually helped the foundation. So every year you go, like through a cold winter, the old rocks will deteriorate and move. We have examined off-site storage. That is costly, and many of the records that we have to access would be very difficult for the SAU HR to go and run over and get somebody's pension records if it was at a storage container going down the road on Route 130. We believe that the barn, when redone, will meet the future needs for many, many years to come, and at the same time, it upgrades the house. The, we have a picture up of the barn. I have some drawings here for anybody who might like to see one, which also provides the layout. The board realizes we've done two public forums. We have discussed this numerous times at our board meetings, and I don't want to forget that this actually started with citizens passing a warrant last year to give us the dollars to study this project. And at this point, I would open it up for any questions first from the board.
Well, I think the one thing I'd like to do to maybe prime the pump for any conversation is, this has been an issue ever since I've been on the board, which has got to be over 10 years now, in terms of keeping that property relevant to our operations and things and crowding and just the general state of that property has always been somewhat of a challenge for the districts. And over that time, we have done several facility studies where we have taken community leaders and just members of the community who are interested in taking part and really walking through. It's very different to go through that location the way we take you through versus maybe a visitor is coming in to maybe visit an administrator. And you really see the amount of work and activity that's going on in that space in any one time. And it's going to be very important that, you know, from a standpoint of the way the board sees it, it's an asset, just like it's one of the schools or anything else, that we are responsible for keeping it up and operating and keeping it relevant. So we have done, as I said, maybe two or three facility studies and looked at the needs, the floor plans, have gotten expert input in terms of how we might change the floor plan. I would say the barn has always been in the sights of seeing that as existing space that is completely unutilized and what options might we have to better utilize that space. And quite frankly, those discussions over that period of time has really culminated to tonight, where we now have architectural, you know, designs. We've had barn experts look at that and validate whether it's worth pursuing. Is it in a state where we can renovate and utilize the space? So a lot of work has been done over this, over this period of time. I'd say maybe seven years or more, having these conversations, not only amongst the school board, but also with our stakeholders and the budget committee and so forth over that period. So with that, here we are.
Just a couple of things about the funding mechanism.
Yes.
We chose the bond route for this project because, again, when you're looking at the bond versus the lease, leasing companies are looking for items that they could take back if you defaulted. Not that a school district is going to default because they have the tax base behind them, but it's, in the case of putting in foundations, redoing walls, doing electrical, HVAC, majority of that is not items that are going to be taken back or repossessed. So it lends itself more of a bond. The bond also has a higher threshold of passing. You need a 66%.
Yes.
So this really allows the community to come out and they can make the decision whether this is going to move forward or not. The reason we looked at the 20 years was looking at the SAU office. A student gets a benefit out of the SAU throughout their whole entire educational career if you're in Hollis. If you look at the Hollis School District, a child's here probably around, for about 10 years. You know, a lot of them come in to us around four, leaving around 13 years old. And as a result of that, I think it's advantageous to spread the cost over more years to more citizens who are going to come through and receive the product of the school district, which in this case is the SAU. Bond rates have been running very, very well. Municipal bonds are in good shape now. So that's another reason, because I think it'd be a cost-effective mechanism for the taxpayers. And I also believe when you spread it out over 20 years, you know, we had talked about some form of revenue stream from the rental. I don't think the revenue stream from the rental was ever intended to pay for the bond, but as time goes on, the next few years, our maintenance costs should be lower, and we can build those facilities up, and the board could decide to make a payment, if so choose off the revenue. So those were the thoughts behind the bond. And I think it really, the biggest factor is really allowing the citizens to support that higher threshold.
Yep.
Because, again, sitting in my chair, if I'm choosing an SAU building or the next item we'll discuss, the lease for student services, obviously, student services are priority.
If we had to choose, right?
Absolutely. If we have to choose, you know, the kids come first, they always have, and they always will.
Yeah, and I always felt strongly that these kind of, these kind of decisions have to be really done by the community. It's not, it's not up to five of us to figure this out. We try to bring the best picture we can, try to point out, you know, where the needs lie and get close to those issues in their, as their agent, and then we bring forward these options to them, and they get to decide. This is their school system. They fund it the way they see fit, and we carry that will out for them. And I just believe strongly in that. So do we want to see if there's any?
Any testimony?
Any testimony? So I'll open the floor to the, for anyone to provide any testimony or input to these projects.
Oh, I get two.
That's just a holding.
That's a placeholder.
My slide to our teacher.
Thank you. Drew Mason, Baxter Road. I am moderator of the Hollis School District. I'm also an alternate member of the Hollis Zoning Board. So this lot is in the residential and agricultural zone and also in the historic district.
Yes.
Are you making any changes to the exterior?
No, it's going to mimic the barn as it is now, and we have that in the drawings.
Okay.
Can I show you a picture here?
I have one right here. Thank you. And are you, are you going to have any zoning issues in terms of your increasing the usage of the space? I mean, an office building isn't a permitted use in the RNA zone, so I don't know what special exceptions or prior history exists on that lot, and I don't know what zoning issues you may have to deal with.
In terms of the volume, we don't anticipate an increase in services provided. What we do see is just a ability for the SAU to have space available that's appropriate for the services we conduct.
Okay. At any rate, that's, that's something that you should probably nail down during your process.
Thank you. Any other input?
Michael Harris, Pepperell Road. I commend you on all the work you've done. It seems very thorough, and the project seems like a very worthy project. I am hesitant to support it with all heart because of the financing. And I think if, if we understood better the rent to be charged and the duration of the lease to the SAU, that might ameliorate some of that concern. So I would hope if there's a 20-year bond that we have a similar lease, if that's possible, and that if, if the rent, the commercial rent is 10 or 11, I can't remember exactly, you showed us the figures before.
Yes, yes.
That we approach that number as well.
Yes.
But anyway, but I do commend you. It's a very thorough project and a very worthy project. I'm sure the SAU really needs it. But it's not totally a Hollis responsibility to provide for the SAU. Thank you.
So we did, just speaking generally and to those topics, we have looked in ransom scenarios based on what we feel we can command from a, from a rent perspective and how much that those revenues could not only cover the maintenance aspects of the property, but also contribute to the debt service on the project itself. So we have a couple scenarios I think we could share. I don't know if we're ready to get into the financials this evening. We're really just talking about the project itself. But we could be prepared to share some of those scenarios with the budget committee and the general public in terms of what we feel we can, we can command from a standpoint of rental rate. The other thing I would point out is the way that the rental splits work out, no matter how you slice it, it runs up to about 60% Hollis, 40% Brookline, and that is not our definition. That's how the DOE, I believe, I don't know if it's the DOE, but there's another entity in Concord that kind of, that defines that, and we'll try to get a little bit more precise on that, on that piece. But I am, it's my understanding that the split is defined in a very certain way. So essentially, if we're raising rent, we also charge the Hollis District rent as well. So we're paying ourselves. So if we raise rent, we pay ourselves and pay the increase as well. So you get, when you run these kinds of scenarios, you get a little bit of diminishing return because no matter how high you try to raise the rent, Hollis is handling the lion's share no matter how you slice it. Of course, the converse is true. The lower rent we go, the more Hollis picks up the lion's share. So what we're trying to do is find that spot where we feel we can reasonably capture revenues to cover as much of the burden as we can without going so out of, out of the realm in terms of way beyond commercial rates, because it's not a commercial property. So there's, we're somewhat limited to how close we can get to competing with those kind of properties and the rental rates that they command. So it's certainly a balance, a very delicate balance. But there, but just to kind of bring this to a, to a short conclusion here, Mike, we have run some additional scenarios around that based on our previous conversations with the budget committee, and we'll look for opportunities to share that maybe either in session or maybe we'll just send the information over to the budget committee for their review at some point. Okay?
So the comment you made about raising the rent costs Hollis money.
Yes.
It's true, but Hollis is responsible for the whole bond.
Yes.
Anyway.
Yes.
So it doesn't matter?
It really doesn't when you really look at it.
From Hollis's point of view, we have to pay either way.
Right.
Either through the rent or through the bond payment.
Or through the debt service. Right.
Yeah, so that's not really a relevant.
Well, there's, there's just the aspect of what you can get from the, the Brookline piece to offset some of that, but it's, like I said, it, you get to a point where you can only get so much out of that.
No, I understand, but I just want to clarify that point. So are you going to try to share that with the budget committee before the hearing on the school district?
I'd be happy to. If, I don't think we're going to have a session where we can come in and present it, but I could certainly share the scenarios we ran.
Yeah, I think we should probably have that before the, the hearing on the school budget.
Sure. Let me take that action and get that over to you.
If you can.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the term of the lease?
Yes, well, the term of the bond is 20, is 20 years.
The term of the bond?
The bond.
I'm talking about the lease.
Oh, with the, with the other districts?
Well, no, you're going to lease it to the SAU, right?
Right.
Oh, our tenant. The tenant lease.
Yes, yes.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Sorry, since our other project is a lease, I think we're in.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I wasn't talking about that.
Yeah. Very well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other input on the Four Lunn Lane project?
Do we want to address the if it doesn't pass Article 11?
Yeah, I think it'd be important. You know, there's some things we did discuss. In the event the bond doesn't pass, this would, of course, not be something that I think is really favorable from a district standpoint, but there will be some funds that we'll need to ask to stabilize the barn. I think it's upwards of like $250,000.
I'll actually read the article because there's a, what I'll call a safety net article.
Article 11.
Article 11? Oh, there it is, okay. In the event that Article 1 is not approved, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $200,000 to stabilize the bond, the barn foundation and frame at Four Lunn Lane and Hollis. That is intended to do nothing more to buy us quite a bit of time, because once the foundation is changed, we now can proceed with more due diligence and those things, and that bond will not be going anywhere, because the two big things for a bond that I've learned is a stable foundation and a good roof, and it has a good roof. So that is the piece that we'd be asking the voters to support, and that will be discussed at the budget public hearing with the budget committee in the coming weeks.
Yeah, and I think the thing is with that is there's no really funding model or a multi-year funding model around that. So that $200,000 will be asked to raise and appropriate in the same, in this budget cycle, and it is not the desired approach that the district wants to take, because we don't think that is optimal for the community, first of all. And it's really a sum of money that is really just stabilizing the barn. The district or the SAU folks get no operational value out of it. It's literally just stabilizing the barn, and that's it. It doesn't give us any, any space to use, nothing. It stays as it is with a stabilized foundation. That's all it buys us. And we have a similar article that we'll get to after we go through the other project, but just keep in mind, you know, these, these alternate articles do add up if the other bonds and municipal leases don't happen to go through.
Drew Mason, Baxter Road. Actually, that raises another question in my mind. Part of the bond issue, as I understand it, is to help with the storage issue for all the stuff. So if the bond issue doesn't pass, are you doing anything to address the volume and weight of storage?
My feeling is, is that the, this district will require that all the paper, all the paper records vacate that premises, and then it's the SAU's problem to go find alternate means. And so we would, we would provide a date certain where that, those documents would need to be vacated, the property, and then all that issue would transfer to the SAU and the governing board to figure out where those documents need to go and what funds need to be allocated or set aside to, to house those documents offsite somewhere.
So a stabilized foundation on the barn wouldn't help?
We get no operational value from that, those funds.
All right. Thank you.
It's the moisture and things like that, so even though you could think of a basement as storing things, the records we need to store need to be in temperature-controlled.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, put a clarification on the, on the $250,000 article. As I understood it, in the bond, the barn is being moved a few feet.
Mm-hmm.
And question if this $250,000 stabilization of the foundation would just be money thrown away when you decide to move the barn a few feet, or would it be part of the project?
I would have to look to the subject matter experts on that.
The, the barn, the foundation that would be put in would be what I'll call Phase 1, and it would be the foundation, that would be the permanent foundation, so the bond would literally be raised.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be thrown away?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
The plan is to move it one foot.
One.
No, I know.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Or the whole foundation.
With your transfer permission, I'll read Article 2 to the lease.
Please do.
Okay. Article 2, to see if the school district will vote to authorize the school board to enter, enter into a 10-year lease purchase agreement of $3,109,900 to finance the acquisition and installation of energy conservation equipment and related improvements at Hollis Upper Elementary School and Hollis Primary School as recommended by the Hollis School District's Facilities Committee, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $365,762 for payments due under the lease purchase agreement during the 2021 fiscal year. This lease purchase agreement will contain an escape clause, non-appropriation clause, and that will be simply a majority vote would be required. Let me just run through a couple of the pieces on the facility project. For those at home and those in the audience, this is a remediation project to address, first of all, some of the pieces that we didn't do during H-Step, but just kind of a little bit of the history behind it. The primary school was built in 1952. The last upgrade, most recent upgrade, I should say, is 1978, and then we did the major energy upgrades in 1718. The basic structures of both buildings are in excellent shape. We have a number of the things that we're talking about. We're on our capital improvements plan, and a year ago, working with the budget committee, we looked at packaging some of the H-Step and some of the major capital improvements to bring forth this year. We believe this is a safe, reliable, and efficient way to upgrade our buildings for decades to come. So this is going to give us many, many years of service. It's amazing, you know, before people arrived, I had taken a stroll around the building, and it's a tremendously great building, well-kept, well-clean, many years of service, and I think a lot of the pieces we're looking at are kind of behind-the-scenes type of things, you know, heating, electrical, and those things. Hughes, also a wonderful building. You know, we did the 1718. We did some minor things up there. There's more projects to go up there. Again, we're combining the CIP with the H-Step and moving forward in one lease. We did identify what we call critical elements at Hughes and critical elements at HPS. At Hughes, the air handler. 3, which is the, one of the major venting units on the rooftop, is at its end of useful life. It will be, need to be repaired with this project or without the project. We need to replace the unit ventilators. Those are the classroom units to provide the heat and the airflow for each of the classrooms. Those, again, we're struggling to get parts for. They are very old, and our custodians do a great job. We have a couple areas that we have identified during this phase of the study that we need to insulate beams. These are major beams that come through, and we'd like to come in with the foam insulation as we did in some areas of the last project. And then, we would like to recommission the munters unit. We think we can make that much more energy-efficient and not have it in a run cycle as often as we do. At HPS, critical, we'd like to have the underground oil tank removed and replaced with propane to put us all in the same fuel. A couple years ago, we started buying our propane with the town, so it gave us a bigger volume, and we get a better contract with all bids going together. The change of propane, propane will allow us to consolidate boilers. We will finish the 19 air-source heat pumps. This building will be done from that aspect of the project. One of the major pieces in this project, and one of the most expensive pieces in the funding of it, is a sprinkler system for this building. We presently do not have a sprinkler system, and that is something we really need to look at. I know the fire chief would very much support that being done. We have the fire panel, which goes along with that, which is Phase 2, which was scheduled to be done, and then we have some interior and exterior door work. Some significant upgrades in each building. We have a building maintenance system upgrade at Hughes, where we would get everything on one system, where our lead custodian could be monitoring that system for their phone. So, a snow day, all of those different days, we wouldn't have staff running around to do what they need to do. It could all be done on their phone. We have a, at HPS, the catch basin, if you went out near the dumpsters, that is starting to erode, and that needs to be replaced, because that's where our buses travel every day. And then the septic grease trap, a few years ago, when we had a leach field issue, that turned out thankfully to be nothing major. What we realized is, we're still grandfathered in that we do not have a grease trap, and if we were ever to have to replace the septic system, we would have to replace the grease trap. So, this is one of those things that we feel if we're going to do this project, this is the right time to do it, and it allows us then in the future, if we needed to, to upgrade the kitchen, because that piece would be done. One of the, the pieces we want to get done in this phase is, we weren't unable, because of funding, to get the lights done in both buildings. Those lights would result in, in a return on investment of, you know, 15% of our electric bill over time, and eventually pay for themselves. And then we would like to go to, again, same thing as Hughes here, a much more controlled heating environment, meaning that we have one major infrastructure that could be run by our custodians off their phones. In terms of the critical elements, those at Hughes are $521,636. At HPS, that's $1,531,136. The huge discrepancy is that sprinkler system, and that's about $700,000 to $800,000 to put all the required plumbing in. It will require its own water tank to have the volume to be able to meet the needs in case of emergency. The significant items that I talked about, from a dollar standpoint, at Hughes, it's $60,000, and HPS, it's $36,130. So, when we bring all of this together, it puts our building totals at $970,636, and at HPS, $1,851,666. If you take out that, again, the fire system, both buildings are getting about the same amount of dollar renovations. This has been an ongoing study and an ongoing work project that has gone very, very well. As I've said, this, from my role as superintendent, is if you had to choose between the two projects that we're proposing, this benefits kids the most, and this is the one I support the most. Yes, we need an SAU office, but at the same time, these are items that will provide a better learning environment for our students, as well as give the community two buildings that will go on for many, many years. We did evaluate what it would cost to build new buildings. This building at HPS, we came out with the architect's estimate somewhere around $17 million, and about $24 million at Hughes. So, it's a significant dollar amount that we're asking, but at the same time, it's going to give you easily two, if not three, decades of use before you're getting back into some major work. Okay? And at this point, I'd turn it back to the chair and...
Yeah, I, I think the thing I would like the folks at home that are maybe watching to think about is, we've had two forums on both these projects where our colleague, Tammy Farid, and our consultants on these projects went through very detailed information in terms of the items that are critical, their cost, and then the non-critical, or what do we call it?
We call them important.
Important, and then, and then we had another category on all three. So, they, in the forums, they go through this, and very detailed attention and time was spent to do that. In this particular bond here, we don't have the, quite the, the time capability to kind of rehash that. I would invite anybody who has interest to view those video, videos on our website prior to the March meeting. And the other thing I'd like to point out with this particular project, as the superintendent pointed out, this was over several years, lots of conversations with stakeholders, and folks may realize that, hey, you have the H-Step, or our energy stuff items in this, as well as some capital improvements. And that was, combining those was really a result of these conversations that we had with our stakeholders, like the, the Budget Committee and things, and folks. So, we came together and said, hey, we realize that there are significant items around both schools that need to be addressed. Let's, let's put these things together into a project. So, that, that's why you see this kind of blend of the energy items, as well as the, the capital improvements. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Take testimony?
Yep. So, we can also, if there's any testimony relating to the, this particular project, we'll open the floor now.
You mean public input?
Yeah, public input.
John calls a testimony.
Am I gonna get sworn in here?
Raise your right hand.
Yeah, exactly. Tom Guillen, Broad Street and Hollis. I apologize, I got here late. I had a question earlier, and I don't know if it was covered, on the duration of the two projects, what the length of the lease and the length of the bond are proposed?
Yeah, we had proposed a 20-year bond, because it was a structural component, foundation, walls, and that, and determined, looking at that project, there was nothing within that project that was going to out, the, the whole project should outlast the length of the bond. When we looked at the lease, the concern was, when you look at like the air-source heat pumps, the unit ventilator, things like that, I didn't want to be paying for something that in, you know, may have a useful life of eight, nine years. Again, that's one of the reasons of public hearing. I mean, the board still has time and feedback on that. I think our attorney, we could go back to him again and discuss that. I think that was just one of the concerns of the useful life of leasing something.
Thank you.
So, yeah, what if...
We did it, we did a 10-year lease and a 20-year bond, and that also changes, just again, for the community, means that it's a two-thirds majority to pass the bond, it's a majority vote to pass the lease.
Yeah. Drew, Drew pointed out something you may want to consider, that after you bring up the bond in the meeting, you can table it and take up this article out of order, and then come back to the bond if you find that this, I mean, just saying, Andy, you said this is more important.
Right.
It's just a, so, all you have to do legally is bring it up.
Right. That's a good suggestion, because again, I think, you know, legally, I had to list it this way, but I think if you said to me to choose, obviously...
Which you said earlier, yeah.
The student priority is, is more important.
So, I don't know, Kelly, do you know what the interest rates would be for the lease yet?
Oh, I didn't bring that with me. It was, Tom didn't remember. I think it was 3.1 for the bond, but we were assured that it would likely be lower. But for budgeting purposes, that's what they've given us, and I think it was 3.2.
I think it was, it was 3.32, 3.35.
The lease is that high?
Yeah.
Because weren't the leases less than that before?
Well, both, both pieces that Kelly's discussing, for the folks at home, we had gotten an estimate of 3.1 on the bond, and I believe it was 3.35 on the lease. Both companies had told us that they would expect them to come in better, but for quoting purposes, since we weren't actually going for that, that's what they would quote us.
For budgeting purposes?
Correct.
Okay, so, what was the lease that we did for the H-Step?
Oh, that was too...
That's what I thought. It was much less.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, I look at it, Mike, that the conditions are about the same, so I think when all is said and done, it's probably, it's probably around the same piece.
Okay. Anyway, I commend you also for this one. This is a really necessary thing, and I, I agree with Andy. This is, in my opinion, a higher priority.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The, I'm sorry, I pulled it up. The CIP and Energy is 3.07.
The quote?
That's the bond.
The bond, 3.07, and the barn is 3.75.
3.75 is the lease? Is that what you're saying?
So, here's the statement on the top. Here's the statement. It says, "Our 20-year interest rate in our January 2020 bond sale was 2.15, and we expect the interest rate for July 2020 to be much lower than 3.75. We use 3.75 to be conservative for budgeting."
I see. Okay.
It's 2.1?
2.15.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's you.
It is.
Yeah.
Lot of hedging.
Rob, may I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes, please do.
I wanted to add a, an important detail. If, thank you. If, if the public looks at our analysis of all the different components that are needed for the schools in particular, but also for the needs of our Four Lawn Lane property, and they think to themselves, why should we pay these interest rates, which is additional cost? Why don't we do these things piecemeal as they come up? The reality is that some, there will be years where we would be facing enormous warrant articles for very significant needs, because, you know, there could be a $200,000 piece on a piece of equipment. There could be, the, the foaming of the beam in particular is really massively important. That's an expense. And then some years might be a little leaner, et cetera, with, with doing the project all in one piece, as was suggested to us by the Budget Committee to study, and as we've recommended, we're able to package everything, get it all done in a one-and-a-half, two-year period, so that we don't see further degradation of the facilities themselves, and, you know, the struggles that our students and staff experience as they work inside, you know, operate inside these buildings that are not in good shape from these components. And then, you know, we can budget better year over year over year. Taxpayers have less expectation of huge spikes with, you know, emergency warrant articles that have multiple layers of if this fails, we need this instead, and we can expect fewer maintenance costs as things are new. So, this is a way of pooling all of the work, so that we have renewed buildings, and pooling the money and distributing it out evenly, so that we have steady, stable budgeting, and for the, and sharing the, the burden of that across multiple generations of students, not just this year's families and this year's, excuse me, residents. So, there is a pragmatic aspect to how this plays out over all those years that taxpayers are supporting it.
Mr. Mason?
To, to reinforce Tammy's point, I'm involved with a, with a fairly large construction project, not this large, but our construction managers is saying that commercial construction costs are going up 5% to 7% a year at this point. Now, if we hit a recession, that may, that would probably change a lot, but things are going, go-go, and, so...
Lots of extra charges on metal and things like that.
I'm reminded of the, and Mike and Tom will remember this, I'm reminded of the paving of the driveways and the parking lots around this building in Hughes a few years ago, and I remember, Mike, in particular, presenting this at the district meeting and pointing out that because of the recession was so severe, we'd had to put off this big project for 10 years, and it resulted in the degradation of the understructure of some of the driveway and parking lot areas, so that it'd end up costing more than it would have, except, you know, times were tough. So, I understood that, and it all made sense. But what we don't want is to see the kind of problems we're seeing with the White Building, the Farley Building. We don't want to see our properties being degraded at a time when the economy's pretty healthy. Folks are, seem to be economically in decent shape.
And in that use case, I recall the substrate underneath the paving crumbles, and if that happens, you're not talking about repaving, you're talking about reclaiming, and then resealing.
So, that's, for example, that's the basin, the drainage basin that was mentioned as, as critical. Items like that can go from being expensive to being, like the mold crisis, monumentally problematic, with great disruptions to the educational program, and potentially injury or potentially damage to vehicles, et cetera. So, you don't want to put them off, but if you just do them piecemeal, they actually cost a lot more, because you're waiting for crisis, and crisis, I call it the Sunday electrician. You know, you have to have somebody come on...
I'd like to give equal time to the alternate article, if this were not to pass, and I would, and you have made this point many times to me, Tammy, about if these things don't take place in this project, they're not going away. What happens is these items, as they're listed, well, they were listed here, but they're in the video on demand, those items will go back into our long-term capital improvements plan. So, we would just shift, we just move them, and the, and the dollar costs go, and maybe we distribute these projects down the line, and any additional costs by delaying these things. So, I just wanted to point that out, but we, there are things that we need to do if the bond doesn't, doesn't pass, and that's why we have Article 12?
Correct.
12.
Article 12 says, "In the event that Article 2 is not approved, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $557,000 for the purchase and installation of an air handler for Hollis Upper Elementary School and 19 air-source heat pumps at Hollis Primary School." These are the two components, especially the air handler, that absolutely has to be done. If neither article was to pass, it would be a potential that sometime next year, we would have to find that kind of dollars if air handler 1 went. It's at the end of its useful life. It's over 20 years old. It has served us very well, but it's time. So, this is kind of, again, a fail-safe article, and we went with the absolute bare minimum, but it's interesting that that $557,000 that you'd pay in one year is almost the equivalent of two lease payments for all the other items.
Right.
You know, and I do think, from my working with Kelly, we do believe the interest rates are gonna come in better, because they have been lately, and I think, you know, just from a sheer business point, if you were going to, if you need to borrow money, this is not a bad time to have to be out borrowing. So, again, Article 12 was put in in case Article 1 does not, excuse me, Article 2 does not succeed. Thank you.
Yes. Any...
Thanks, Andy.
Comments or concerns on that article? And certainly from the floor.
Thank you for pointing that out, that we have to pay in one year, equal to two years' worth of lease payments for the entire project.
Yeah, I mean, that...
Mr. Harris.
That article certainly doesn't make sense. Tammy's point was very well-taken, that you want level, a level funding over a long period of time, much preferred to, like an elephant in one year.
Yes. It's not, certainly, our desire to go that route by any means. We feel it's not the, the most desirable for the community to have to, what I term as spike, spike a budget year with these type of needs, somewhat asynchronous needs that, that come up.
And then I think, the only thing I think that the board should contemplate before a budget hearing is, having heard Drew's strategy of tabling the bond, taking up the of tabling the bond, taking up the lease first, I think, you know, we should discuss that at our next posted meeting, which is the public hearing, as a potential strategy. Because I think that will allow voters to come in, understand what we are saying as a school board and as an SAU. This, this article for the lease is about the children. We'd like both, but we also understand the reality of financing.
So what we've done in the past, what's historically done, is the board will convene roughly about a half hour before the public hearing for the, for the budget. And we will read into the record each one of these articles and then we will take a, we'll take positions on each one of them. We like to do that to bring a solid foundation of support or otherwise on each one of the articles for the budget committee. We will stay in, we will most likely recess during that hearing, but we'll stay in, in, in session in case we do get additional input through that hearing process. And we reserve the right to alter, make some adjustments based on the testimony we receive, input we receive, and even in some cases guidance, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, procedural and ordering and stuff like that. So, but by the end of that, we pretty much lock down the warrant at that point.
Correct. That night, Kelly will be there to get signatures. Gina will be there taking the recorded votes of both the school board and the budget committee. And that will allow her to finish the information guide that we will publish again this year, which is just the article, the facts around the article and how the two boards voted.
Okay. Any other items or any other comments, concerns?
Well, I just, I just wanted to thank the board and the budget committee. This has been a long process. And no matter what the outcome is at the ballot, this has been a very positive piece for the school district because we have a lot of valuable information to use as we move forward, you know, whatever the vote is decided. So I want to thank them and again, for supporting last year's article, which funded the ability to do all these studies and gather this information.
So do, we have met all the statutory requirements for hearing the bond as well as any, for the, for the municipal lease?
Correct.
Right. Well, at that time, at this time, then, I think I'll go ahead and shut down the...
May I ask just on record that we get the links to public forums and these meetings posted to our, our Hollis School Board site, not only just through the live stream section of the...
But maybe on right up, at the landing page, right up front?
Okay.
Maybe we can do that.
Yep.
All right. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. Going once, going twice, going thrice. All right. I'll close the public hearing at this time.